This meeting of the City of Eureka Springs City Council will come to order. Clerk on staff, Paul.
James DeVito.
Here.
Parker Raphael.
Here.
Karen Lindblad.
Here.
Ken Pownal.
Here.
Amy Balance.
I'm here.
Mitch Barry.
Here.
306.
Thank you. About to please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next would be approval of the agenda, most to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
We need to add on number 14, under unfinished businesses, a resolution on the moratorium for weekly rental licensing.
Under unfinished business?
I believe we discussed it the last time.
It's the moratorium that is specifically to hold off on that licensing.
I would move it to new.
We should do it on this line.
We did it under three.
Yeah.
We're going to be discussing that.
Good. Just move it up to slash 14 and move it to three. Mr. Pownal.
Two items, under new business number 10, discussion of meetings from November to December. And since we usually have one anyway, I'd like to add a 10-minute break after unfinished business.
Second.
Anything else? Two-minute break after 10. No further, Mr. Pownal.
The approval is amended.
The second?
Second.
Any changes, any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda's approved. Next would be approval of the minutes for September 24, 2012.
Second.
Changes, deletions, additions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minister approved. Next would be commission committee authority reports, expired terms. Beverly, do you have anything to plan?
I'm here for your planning commission. I believe earlier this week, perhaps the end of last week, yeah, last week, Glenna probably sends you out a request for the 2013 budget. And I also wanted to pass these out to you. This is the last page of the vision plan that is currently in place. This was written about 18 years ago. But even, even at that time, it was saying, please give planning help, please put in a planner, please give them authority. So I just wanted that to go along. Here's another one, Karen. Sorry, I just made sense.
Thank you.
But I just wanted y'all to have that to back up our request for our budget. And the last thing I just wanted to report was, it's been put in the newspaper two weeks in a row now that incorrect, when the planning commission was talking about a new budget, a new vision plan, I told them that we had just gone to training and it said that the whole city had to buy in and everyone had to be a part of that. And then I did not think that the planning commission could do the whole thing. Not that I didn't think that the whole town was capable of it, certainly I did. But I was talking just to that table that I thought it had to be all-inclusive and not just come from the planning commission. So for right now, we're just going to take the vision plan that we have and make sure that we understand everything that it says. And if there are small things that we believe that everybody can agree on, we'll send it on through. But I did want y'all to have that, part of that, so you'll know why we asked for some of the things that we did in our budget. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Walker, would you spread those around a little? I don't believe we have anything under CAPC. Under the hospital tonight, we have the CEO of Eureka Springs Hospital, Chris Bariola, who would like to stand up and introduce himself. Chris, welcome to the microphone.
Thank you. I just wanted to officially introduce myself to the council as the new administrator of Eureka Springs Hospital. I've been here officially a month now and look forward to working in the hospital to improve the services that we have now and to hopefully increase the number of services that we, that we'll have in the hospital and provide for our community. So that's, I didn't want to take up much of your time, but that's, I wanted to come and officially introduce myself personally.
Welcome. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Next would be parks. You should have now a copy of a nomination on Ms. Myrna Thaxton for position number one for Parks and Rec. Consider that for next meeting.
Thaxton.
Myrna Thaxton.
Okay.
Position number one. Okay, yeah. Okay. Moving right along. Nothing under HTC, nothing under cemetery. I don't see anybody here. I don't know if anybody's in the hall. Next. There's two people in the hall? Okay, apparently not for the cemetery. Okay. Next would be public comments. We'll round it up with border. We have one person under public comment, Mickey Schneider. Come in, please. Hello, Mickey.
Hi. Mickey Schneider for the Veterans Parade. Can you see that, Nate?
Can you hold it up a bit? There you go.
Okay. Just wanted to remind everyone that Veterans Weekend, November 9, 10, and 11 is coming up. And because Veterans Day is following on a Sunday, we are having the parade as usual on Saturday. It kicks off from the library at 10:00 a.m. All veterans or loved ones of veterans, past or present, are pleased welcome to come to the parade. We try to supply our convertibles for our World War II and other disabled veterans. But you have to let us know. These are the posters that will be going all over town. Hopefully by next week, they'll be up. They have Sue Glave's number on there, or the two numbers. You can call and let her know if you have a convertible that we could greatly use. We do a meet and greet after the parade on Saturday. Like I said, it kicks off at 10:00. Last year, the lineup was over a mile long. This year, we think it's going to be even better. You can also contact me, I'm her assistant. My city, my number is on the city website under planning, so you can get my number there. We have a good need for food for the meet and greet, anything and everything, finger food, sandwiches, desserts, anything and everything. It will be in the gym of the auditorium again this year, like last year. These guys end up pretty hungry after that walk. I don't think it's that long, but boy, do they get hungry. So if you can do anything in regards to donating food, we'd appreciate that. You can take it to the gym on Saturday morning between 9:00 and 11:00. If it's not perishable, you can drop it off at my shop across the street, the tourist stop next to Main Street Cafe, and we will get it over there. And like I said once again, this is honoring all of our veterans. We're the only one in the county to have this parade. It's our fourth year. So if you have veterans, if you are a veteran, if you know veterans, please get them in the parade. And if they do need special assistance, please let us know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mickey? I think it's a really important parade, and I would like to suggest to you all that you have it later in the day when there's going to be a lot more people on the street.
This is for our, this is for our veterans, and believe me, the whole route is packed with people.
Okay.
And we're doing it on Saturday. Oh, forgot to say, sorry, thank you. The gun salute, the 21-gun salute that is held on Veterans Day is on Sunday this year. It will be held right here in this parking lot between the courthouse and the auditorium at 11:11. We will have some music in Basin Park shortly before, music afterwards. I believe the Holiday Island Chorus is going to come and be in the parking lot right before the salute. And at KJ's Karibé, she is hosting a veterans' art show. Now whether you're a veteran who does art or you do art in regards to veterans, it will be there, and that will be Sunday afternoon. Friday is our big hamburger cook-off who makes the best burger in town. This is for restaurants, for individuals. And we're hoping for the mayor and the fire chief, since the police chief is priorly engaged.
Yeah.
Anybody and everyone is welcome, and just call us to get the information on that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next would be our unfinished business section. Number one, on nonconforming off-premises signs, I believe it's still postponed. If there's any changes. Number two is...
Right.
Yes, ma'am.
Is it time when it's ready? It's ready, right?
Until it's approved, it says.
So why don't we just amend the agenda and get on with it, since we've got it, and start approving it, so we don't have to keep postponing it all the time?
Okay, well, that, that'll be handled under the sign section on, sign number on...
On number 11, then?
Number 11.
Okay.
You just want to take number one off?
Yeah.
That's, that's down, okay.
All right.
So we have to approve the other one according to what the agenda says.
Okay, that's fine, then.
Okay.
I forgot it was down there.
So it is still postponed until further notice. Number two, building permits, parking lot demolition, construction, ordinance, planning. I believe we have the ordinance, I don't...
Move to discuss.
Second. Floor's open. Pownal.
We assign a number and put ordinance for permits on the first reading.
Second.
Discussion. Okay, no discussion, we'll go ahead and take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
It would be ordinance 2161. An ordinance amending chapters 11 and 13 of the Eureka Springs Municipal Code setting certain requirements on permits issued in commercial zones. Whereas the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, has made a comprehensive study and review of the permit process for issuing construction, parking lot, lots and/or demolition permits in commercial zones. And whereas the council believes that it is in the best interest of the city and its citizens to provide further review before issuance of said permits, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that. Section 1. Chapter 11 of the Eureka Springs Municipal Code is hereby amended to include the following requirements. Prior to the issuance of any new commercial construction, parking lot, and/or demolition permit within any commercial zone within the corporate city limits of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, the property owner or his or her representative, in addition to making an application to the building official, shall submit the application with all accompanying data to the planning commission for consideration and approval or disapproval at their next meeting after submission to them and no later than 45 days after submission. The building official shall only issue a new commercial construction, parking lot, and/or demolition permit after approval by a majority vote of the planning commission or as otherwise provided herein unless the work is required for public safety or hazardous conditions. Section 2. The chapter 13 of the Eureka Springs Municipal Code is hereby amended to include the following requirements. Upon submission by the property owner or his or her representative of any application for issuance of any new commercial construction, parking lot, and/or demolition permit to the planning commission, the commission shall act upon the application for approval or disapproval by majority vote thereof at their next meeting occurring no later than 45 days after submission. The commission shall review, review the application for appropriateness under the Eureka Springs Municipal Code, all city-adopted building and/or construction codes, and any adopted guidelines of the Eureka Springs Planning Commission. The chairman of the planning commission shall notify the building official and the property owner or his or her representative of the commission's action within three business days. Notification shall be in writing and shall be by hand delivery or U.S., United States mail. Depositing notification, postage prepaid in United States mail shall be considered completed notification. Three, if for any reason the planning commission shall fail to act on the application within 45 days of its submission to them by the property owner or his or her representative, the mayor may direct the building official in writing within 10 days thereof to approve or disapprove the permit without action by the commission. The mayor is not required to do this, though, if in his or her judgment to do so would not be otherwise permitted by law. Lack of action by the mayor within 10 days shall be considered a denial. That all, number four, that all denials by the planning commissioner, mayor, may be appealed to the Eureka Springs City Council by notification of appeal filed in writing by the property owner or his or her representative within 30 days of the denial with the city clerk. The city clerk shall place the appeal on the city council's next meeting agenda occurring no sooner than 10 days after filing and no later than 45 days after filing. Five, city council may, upon consideration of said appeal, approve or deny the permit by majority vote. The city clerk shall notify the building official and the property owner or his or her representative of the council's action within three business days. Notification shall be in writing and shall be by hand delivery or United States mail. Depositing notification, postage prepaid in the United States mail shall be considered completed notification. Six, denials of an appeal by the city council shall be appealable to any court of competent jurisdiction as otherwise provided by law. Section 3, repeal clause. All ordinances, resolutions, and parts thereof in conflict herewith are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict. Section 4, severability clause. In the event that any section, subsection, paragraph, subdivision, clause, phrase, or other provision or portion of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid or unconstitutional, the same shall not affect the validity of this ordinance, code section, or chapter as a whole, or any part of provision other than the part so decided to be invalid or unconstitutional, and the remaining provisions of this ordinance, code, code section, or chapter shall remain in effect.
Mr. DeVito.
Move to approve ordinance number 2161 on its first reading.
Break out our real call vote here.
Mr. Raphael.
Yes.
Mr. DeVito.
Yes.
Ms. Balance.
Yes.
Mr. Pownal.
Yes.
Ms. Lindblad.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
No.
5-1. That's true.
Go ahead.
The reason I voted no was the issue that I have with it is the building, the planning commission reviewing the plans for conformity to the building and construction codes. They're not certified or capable, I mean, many of them are, maybe, but as a rule, that's what the building inspector does. The rest of this I don't have a problem with, but when it comes to, and I'm speaking as an architect, you know, this goes to the planning building official where he reviews for the adopted building and construction code. Planning commission has a lot of expertise in reviewing it for appropriateness and for any guidelines, but I think that should be left extra building inspector.
Mr. Murphy.
Now, section 1, number 2, doesn't the...
Point of order, we're going to remote you in a special seat.
Doesn't the building official, he doesn't have to approve it.
Good. That's the first real call vote. We got another motion. Is that just to sign the number? And discuss, is my understanding?
It was approval on the first reading.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Next would be weekly dwelling units list, moratorium resolution. Give that one up.
Move to discuss.
Second.
Floor's open.
Do you have a what? The weekly short-term rental list?
I'm going to get it on the one.
Is that your question?
I was asking about the resolution, since that's part of this.
I don't have a list.
Well...
Are we all on the same item of business?
Number 3, weekly dwelling. Didn't we, we're just supposed to move the moratorium up to that one?
Well, yes.
Okay.
So we have motion to this chapter, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Ask if we had a copy of the resolution.
Go ahead. Yes.
Do we know when the moratorium is due, or something?
October 22nd. Will you take one and pass this down, please?
I'd like to make a motion that we didn't have a moratorium for another 180 days.
Second.
180.
180.
Leading second, any further discussion? Clerk.
It is important to not hold it up for too long because people come in and ask for licenses in categories that aren't on the business license list, and that is the catch.
I would move, excuse me, sorry.
It jams up the works if we do this too long.
Don't we usually move to, assign a number and read it for discussion before we start discussing?
On resolutions, yeah.
Maybe we should do that. But I think there's a motion, is there a motion on the table?
It isn't just a motion to extend it, it's not a motion to make a new resolution. I don't know if we need to do that.
It'll run out on the 22nd.
But if we extend a resolution, it's just extending the same resolution for 180 days.
We're not...
I mean, I don't think we need a resolution.
It'd just be the same ordinance number, you know?
Yeah.
Any idea what that was?
I think it was a resolution, not an ordinance.
Well, the last time we did this, it had a new resolution each time the extension was made. And that's probably why the digital electronic signs had new resolutions each time. And it, 602 was passed on 6/23. Moratorium on that business license category.
We can go ahead and act on the motion in the second, if there needs to be change and bring a resolution back.
The guy, just go ahead.
Mr. Weaver's not here.
Prefer the resolution?
Harry, you don't want to do it. You made a motion in second, that's what we're discussing now. Any further discussion on it? If no further, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
My understanding was that you wanted to extend the moratorium for 180 days without a resolution.
Well, I didn't say without a resolution, I just said extend it for 180 days.
Okay.
So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
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 Okay. Turn it out.
Will we assign a resolution number and read for purposes of discussion?
Second.
I think we can take a voice vote on this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Resolution number...
What did you say?
Aye.
Thank you.
It will be 606. A resolution continuing, taking out that E. A moratorium on the issuance of business license under line item 199, all services and businesses not otherwise listed. Whereas the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, is in the process of reviewing weekly rentals and other short-term rentals, now therefore be resolved by the City Council of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that the city clerk is hereby directed to not issue any line item 199 business license for a period of an additional blank days under section 4.36.04 of the Eureka Springs Municipal Code.
Floor's open for discussion. Mr. Pownal.
Small matter, moratorium, I believe, is misspelled, and I'm concerned about anything less than, or more than 60 days, because if, if we do, as was previously mentioned, 180 days, this throws it into the new council, and this has been on our agenda for some time, and I'd like to see us start clearing up our agenda, so, those 45 days. This is discussion.
Any other discussion? Ms. Lindblad.
It was pointed out by a citizen that showed up at a meeting last time in section 11, 114.8 of the city code on zoning, non-conforming uses. It says continuation subject to the following provisions of this chapter. Landowners may continue to use non-conforming use of structures or lots which legally have been listed more than 180 days prior to the effective date of the ordinance from which this chapter derives and would now be made illegal thereby. If any nonconformity is created by any amendment to this chapter, adopted in the future, landowners likewise may continue their previous use, which is made non-conforming by the amendment. If such existed more than 180 days prior to the effective date of... If such existed more than 180 days prior to the effective date of such amendment, landowners must bring all non-conforming uses instituted within 180 days prior to the effective date of the ordinance. And what this citizen was pointing out was that they were saying that they thought that this already precluded any, any weeklies being used, and I'd like to ask Beverly if the, if the planning commission got any legal advice on using this to stop it.
What she's saying in, in our code, it does say if something's already been in existence for 180 days before you've made the law change, then you have to make them legally non-conforming. Y'all know that there's a list that they just got their business licenses and things in July, but if y'all keep pushing this out, then they will be 180 days in existence before the law changes. I've given all of that to Mr. Weaver, and I don't know the answer yet.
Okay.
Thank you. Ms. Balance.
I've been contacted by a few people who do have weekly rentals. They tell me that their weekly rentals are on the basis of, generally speaking, people who want to come here and live here for a little bit before they decide if they want to actually move here. She said that when the FEMA people were in town, one of the people said that when the FEMA people were in town, they rented on a weekly basis to them. There are other circumstances, for instance, laborers who can't come up with enough money for first month and down, or first month and last month, and a maintenance or whatever deposit, so there are several reasons for there to be weekly rentals. These people asked me to bring their concerns forward, and those were some of their concerns.
Ms. Lindblad.
Well, I'd like to say that there are several places in town, like Nuttman Fancy and the Log Cabin and cabins, and there's another place where weekly rentals are available and they're commercial, they're commercial businesses. The problem that the people who have contacted me have said that, you know, their neighborhoods are neighborhoods where they do not want things like B&amp;Bs in their neighborhood, and one of the problems they have with what just happened with these licenses is they got, they had no right to say anything about them, they didn't come for the planning commission, I don't believe, and so all of a sudden, whammo, they've got one in their neighborhood, and they want to keep their neighborhoods residential, and in Eureka Springs, I think it is really important that we try to keep our neighborhoods and neighborhoods and not have commercial businesses in those neighborhoods, but I know that at least those three places that are commercial, are a commercial establishments, all rent by the week, so I don't know that we have a shortage of weekly rentals in town, and I think the fear of the citizens is that, you know, things like weekly rentals and B&amp;Bs and tourist lodging are going to continue to invade neighborhoods where the people in those neighborhoods, they want to know their neighbors, they want to know their neighbors are going to be there for quite a while, and they really don't want to be living next to something that's relatively like being a motel or hotel, and that's what they've expressed to me.
Any further? Turn around.
If I understand the citations, if I just read, that would mean that, I'm assuming that this list that you already have, it would go into effect as non-conforming, already approved on a three or four day period in July, which would be a little tough to, to track, so even if you looked at the first date, which is July the sixth, and the last date is July 23rd, 180 days is going to be up sometime in the December to January 22nd timeframe, before a move that we had in the blank on additional days, be 30 days to take action on this ordinance.
Was that a motion?
Yes.
Oh, I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Motion.
No.
I'm sorry. Was there a no? Okay.
It's five, one.
Down there.
Prove resolution, six, oh, six, is a mandate.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Do we have to do that on the resolution? I thought we could do it on the resolution. I'll have to take a roll call vote, my bad. Ordinance is a resolution, very different sometimes.
Mr. Pownall.
Yes.
Mr. Berry.
Yes.
Ms. Balance.
No.
Ms. Lindblad.
Yes.
Mr. DeVito.
Yes.
Mr. Raphael.
Yes.
Five, one.
Okay. Next will be number four, be update on Texas franchise workshops to be scheduled after budget workshops, where we had on-
Move to discuss.
Second.
Floor is open.
I'm just going to try and set a date for it now that we're, well, not quite through the budget resolution, but getting close.
Any further discussion on it? If not, we'll move on to number five, be the auditorium agreement, 2013. Mr. Maloney, motion to discuss.
Second.
There he is. He's just in time. Okay? I'll let him work his way up to the mic. I can almost guarantee you're going to need a little more than that.
Good evening. I'm Ray Dilfield, Special Events Director for the CAPC, and it would appear that I am representing Mr. Maloney.
No questions? Can go ahead and shoot a ray. I've been talking to Mr. Maloney. Here's what Mike sent me, so you have some idea what page he's on.
Am I presenting this?
No, 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 this is just discussion. No, no, I thought you were going to talk about the high points of this, that's what Mike sent me.
Oh, I hadn't seen this.
Oh, yeah?
I was here on another issue, I beg your pardon.
Oh, you were here on another, which, which other issue?
The heating.
The heating?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, all right, we'll back up then, I misunderstood. Mr. Maloney and I have been talking to each other about the auditorium agreement, he's, and I hate to even get into this until we get, get this thing ironed out and bring it to you as a whole, a whole item, because it's just piecemeal right now. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them. Mr. Pownall.
We suspend the rules and postpone this till the next meeting.
Second.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
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 Suspended the rules.
I guess on any rule suspension, we have to do a roll call vote?
Yeah, it's true. Ms. Balance.
Yes.
Mr. Pownall.
Yes.
Mr. Berry.
Yes.
Mr. Raphael.
Yes.
Ms. Lindblad. Mr. DeVito.
Yes.
Okay.
Five, zero, one, absolute.
Ms. Lindblad, there is a, there was a motion and a vote to extend this until the next meeting on the auditorium agreement.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda is number six ordinance for voting by ward, Ms. Lindblad, Mr. Pownall.
Discuss.
Second. Floor is open. Pownall.
Before we start, I'd like to respectfully request that our esteemed press either move their recording somewhere else, I had several phone calls this last week, that it's being picked up on the recording, it's being shown on YouTube, and it's also very distracting sitting here at the table.
What do y'all suggest to go? Over here?
He was sitting over there the last time it was picked up also, and he's right, and I left here right now.
Just, come sit over here if you want.
Don't, you can, you can probably sit up here in the corner. This, this would be the only mic that would pick anything up from there. Pull that chair out of the way. Get that away from you. All right. Floor is open for discussion on number six. Mr. Pownall.
It still dismays me that this can't get the tables approval to go into a workshop, because I think there's a lot of things that need to be discussed and considered, but since we can't, we've, we've had a draft ordinance in the past that has not gone forward. The only thing that I'd like to mention is that in consideration of, in considering putting this ordinance together, I'd like to point out, in voting by ward, in state statute 1443407B1A, and if you'll bear with me this until I find it.
Which page?
I'm trying to get there, so I can give you a-
1447.
1443407?
407.
It's on page, where's the page, 524.
407, secondary city-
I must, I must have-
307, sub 307 in this ordinance.
307?
Same here.
Wow, 1443407.
Excuse me, it's 307 on page 520. I wrote it down wrong, wish me stick to the day. One of the things that will make this, if, if we look at voting by wards, there's two considerations, voting totally by ward or having one position voted at large and the other one in the ward, which means that currently, unless I'm reading the state code wrong, each ward is supposed to have their own polling place, which if this were to reach it, would make it very easy to disperse ballots in that type of voting, and that needs to be considered in drafting this ordinance, and also, I was going to ask the city attorney, but since he's not here, as to why the election commission has not provided for voting place, public place for holding elections in each ward. So that's a couple considerations that needs to be taken into consideration whenever we go forward in discussing putting this to an ordinance.
Ms. Lindblad, you had your end.
That was my consideration also, and I have not gotten an answer about that, but I do think we need to move forward on this and, you know, change our way of electing since a lot of voters have told me that they don't know why they end up voting for people in other wards, and, and when they call me, they'll go, well, you're my ward representative, and it's like, no, all the city council people right now are your representatives because you vote for all of them, and I think it would be wiser for us to switch to either a voting by ward completely for both representatives, which wouldn't bother me at all, or the people that I've talked to, or that we do it one-on-one, which I think would be really a confusing, confusing for the population, but what people have told me is that they're tired of the person they want for their ward to be voted out, or somebody they don't want being voted in by everybody else in the city and the other wards, and now that we have reapportioned, things are, I know are going to be more equal, but it still seems to me that it would be easier for people to run for council if they only had to campaign in their ward, because I've done citywide, and it is a lot of work and takes a lot of time, and I think that way they would feel like there's a person more in their neighborhood that represents them, rather than somebody across town who they vote for, who they don't know. So I'd like to see us move forward on getting this ordinance passed. I do understand, however, that we probably need to find out first about the, the voting, where people would vote, so, so I move that we postpone this till the next meeting and come in with all the information we need and then move forward on it.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr.?
I would like to encourage citizens to let us know about your opinion on this. I've kind of, this has been around for a while, I've kind of asked everybody I run into, and I haven't run into one person that thinks it's a good idea. That doesn't mean I can't be convinced, but I just don't know, and I think people need more time to think about it and make up their minds.
Mr. Berry.
Well, I'm agree with Mr. Raphael. Contrary to, Ms. Lindblad, I've had a lot of people saying that they, they like the way that we've been voting, and I think we just need to have more citizens contact us. Most of the time, and we can get into this later on, so I'm all for postponing this for right now, just to allow the citizens to let us know, because again, the people that I've talked to are very comfortable with the elections the way they're held.
Ms. Balance.
Well, when we're reading through these state statutes and we look at the case notes, when we look at the case notes about at-large voting, it says here, "Evidence was sufficient to establish that at-large electoral system in city was unconstitutionally maintained to intentionally deprive black voters of their rights." So, having watched politics in this city for 20-some years, it occurs to me that there have been people that ran from their wards and were elected by their wards, but some kind of a cabal, shall we say, or some kind of an organization, or some kind of whatever, denied those people in those wards their representatives. I don't know kind of how to say this without pointing fingers or offending anybody, but it seems that there have been certain factions in this city who have been very successful at getting their faction to run the city because they had enough people in the city to vote in their candidate, but the people in that ward really wanted the other candidate. So I think that's something we need to think about as we're moving forward and looking at this, it is, voting at large and electing our council at large does tend to alienate and disenfranchise a portion of our populace, so I just would like us to think about that as we're moving forward. Thank you.
Any further, Mr. Weaver?
I think something as important as how people vote should be left up to the voters to decide, not for six people sitting at this table to make that decision for the entire city.
Ms. Lindblad.
Well, first I would say, in reply to Mr. DeVito, somebody decided this in the first place, and it probably was six people sitting at this table decided that we were going to do the election the way that we are doing it now, so I don't see why the six people sitting at this table can't change it, you know, if it doesn't work, we can try it out, we can change it back, but what Ms. Balance was talking about is what people have told me, that they feel like they don't always get- because when people in particular wards that have representatives there cannot get the person they want for their ward elected because some, a group of people in two other wards vote that person out, it just seems very unfair to me that those people can't get who they want to be their representative. You know, we're a really small city, and we don't have a lot of big issues going on like a lot of large cities do. And I've had people say, well, you know, then maybe these people from this ward will get this, and those people won't get that. That's really not the way Eureka Springs works, because we're a really small town. And I just think that it would be nice to let people in their ward, since we nominate out of wards, get who they want elected as their representative. Otherwise, let's just throw the ward system out, and we'll just elect, you know, nominate citywide and elect citywide, and that'll be that.
Ms. Balance.
I'd like to thank my colleague from Ward Two for making my point. There are certain factions in this city that pretty much control the city, and they probably do have the votes to vote this down citywide. However, I still maintain that it's not a healthy situation. I maintain that this city has been run by certain factions for a long time, and.
We're in order. We're talking about a motion to.
I understand, yeah. Ms. Balance.
I think the motion's been made, so let's move on.
All right, then I'll just thank my colleague for making my point and ask the people to think about it.
Okay, thank you. Any further? Mr. Raphael.
Having this ordinance in front of me, is this the ordinance we're considering, or is it, do we need to do more work on this ordinance?
We're just delaying it right now. That's the motion that's on the table right now.
Okay. No further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This is for the delay.
Correct. 6-0.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Can I have the city clerk forward a copy of this ordinance, please?
Yes, sir.
Anyone else?
Because I don't have one.
I have one, thank you.
This one has not been numbered yet, has it?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, this moves us on to the auditorium, number seven, the auditorium heat coal report.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Okay, floor is open. I believe we had a resolution last time, number 604, to increase the auditorium capital expenses, 12-00-5811, to $15,000 to replace the heat coal and the two-carrie handlers at the auditorium.
Correct.
Got resolution number 604 right here in front of me.
That wasn't approved, and we had a resolution to go out and get another quote.
Okay.
It was postponed. What was postponed? Resolution 604.
Mr. Raphael?
No, that's what I was going to say, I thought we were waiting on more information.
We were waiting on Mr.?
But winter's coming.
Yes, it is.
We were supposed.
Southern electric heaters?
We were supposed to get a report on what's going on at the auditorium, and this is it.
I believe we have a gentleman here to speak to this issue. Come on up.
Evening, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, you, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, Madam Cork. As you know, the heat exchangers in the auditorium heating system have basically turned to Swiss cheese. Whether that's a function of age, or water quality, or some other factor, we really don't know, and is actually irrelevant, because at this point in time, we have no heat in the main part of the building. We have a small gas-fired furnace that supplies the gym, the basement of the facility, which has been running fairly constantly since Saturday night, just to try to keep some level of warmth in the building, because as you know, once that stone gets cold-soaked, it stays cold. So trying to maintain a little bit of comfort level in there is the best we can do right now. And between tomorrow and December 21st, we have 23 events scheduled in the auditorium. Basically, what we have, the heat exchangers in the air handler units are, picture if you will, a car radiator half the size of a ping pong table. Over the years, they have been patched sporadically, but in mid-October of last year, the coil in the east side, the first street side of the building, sprung multiple leaks, and Mark Eastburn from Eastburn Heating and Air came out and patched seven leaks, and as soon as he turned the water back on, a bunch more appeared. And he actually showed me in the copper, where it's so corroded from the inside, where you could just poke through the copper with your finger, that was in October of last year, and we started addressing what we could do about it. In April of this year, the second unit, in the west side unit, also sprung multiple terminal leaks. Diagnosis is that further attempts at patching will prove futile. So we contacted a number of contractors. Most of them had reactions along the lines of, oh my God. Then there was a guy who came and said, let me see if I can find you some names for somebody who might be willing to tackle this. They're not anxious to jump on this. So we did get quotes from one company, Airworks, and Madam Cork, if you could distribute those around the table. We have estimates for two options. The first is just to replace the, to repair the existing hot water system, which uses a boiler, well, not strictly speaking a boiler, because it doesn't actually boil the water, it circulates hot water. It's roughly the size of a Prius. I think it's rated at about 1.3 million BPU, and it circulates hot water through the two units, through the heat exchangers, which are located in the airstream, which heats the air, which warms the building. The problem is that over and above just replacing the heat exchanger, they discovered a number of code violations in the installation of the original boiler. It has a single wall flue that penetrates a wall, and it's tied into the existing chimney that was used for the coal-fired boiler from way back when, that doesn't have a proper liner. So over and above just the expenses of fixing the hot water system, one, we have the extra expense of the code violations or noncompliance. Second, we're still dealing with a 22-year-old system that has a design life of 15. So even if we fix the circulating hot water portion of the system, there's no guarantee that the rest of it will soon be working tomorrow. That's why we went for a second option on the estimates that you see before you, to replace the entire air handling, heating, and air conditioning system with heat pumps. So basically, I'm handing you your choice of two lead balloons. Neither one is an attractive option, but the building currently has no heat.
So the total price is $23,000?
That's just for the repair of the hot water system. It does not address the code compliance issues.
How much for the heat pump?
The heat pump is the second section that I gave you there.
75.
74, 589. And basically, that rips out the existing air handling units and uses the existing ductwork. Yes?
I know there are some, we had installed in our duplex, some, I can't remember what you call them, but they're like, they're heating units, they kind of stand alone, you can put one in each room, and you can have a sort of a central unit for those. I can't think of what they're called, can you?
No. Air handles?
Mini splits, yes. Have you checked into mini splits at all?
I think it's the volume of the building that limits those. Those may be defined by our residential or small commercial use before 6,400 square feet, and the volume of the main auditorium. I don't think they'd be adequate.
I see. Thank you.